If you wanted to go through the board training, she would recommend going back through roles and responsibilities and reviewing your agreements with the new board members. She threw out a date of September 13th or October 25th. Either of those dates work.
September 13th.
I can't do the 13th.
Can't do the 13th. Let's see.
Twenty fifth is fine also.
What does the 25th work for?
It's fine for me.
September?
October 25th. That's off the backside of a board meeting, so we'd have two nights right now. She did throw out another third date of September 11th. Does that work better? Doesn't work as well for me, but I can make that work.
I can do the 11th or the 25th.
I'm good with both.
I'm good with both.
I'm open to.
Give me a choice. You guys want the 11th? Would you rather have the 11th so you don't do back-to-back nights?
You've got stuff on the 25th or you have stuff on the 11th.
I can squeeze it around and make it work.
Sure. Doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay.
Nine 11?
Nine 11. That's all I have for secret to this.
And Joe, we'll set up Laura with you and go over how you're going to facilitate that.
Okay. Joe, facilitate.
And will we be talking 6:30?
Yeah, I think I'll keep the same time consistent. But that's okay with you.
All right. Committee reports. Policy?
The policy committee met last week.
Last night.
Last night.
I was there.
I was there. It's been a long week already. We met last night and we discussed the policy changes from press and they're there in the consent agenda. The only thing we did was seven colon 100. We kept the date as the first day of school for immunizations that we had changed back in February. We left that there and made the other recommended changes. And we also discussed policy seven colon 40. And our current policy is that you need to be enrolled at North Boone in order to play sports. And the committee felt that it needed to remain the same and not change the language of the policy. We looked at some different policies of other area schools and what their policies were and how eligibility is figured and things like that. It was decided that that should stay the same.
Actually, I was going to talk a little more about it before consent, but it seems like, as long as Mary brought it up, I'll throw in a little bit with the information that I went back and looked forward to and I looked back into the history of what the policy was or what press had said. Press has a footnote number six that was previously in the footnotes, which we don't bother with, but it said, "State law is silent on this issue. However, the Illinois High School Association bylaws 3.011 and 4.011 state that in order to be eligible to participate in interscholastic competition, a student must be enrolled in the district and take 25 credit hours." And so then, in working with press and the attorneys down there, they said, "A couple of the things you want to keep in mind is, is if you are a member of an association, you'll fall under those guidelines or those bylaws." And the other thing is too, is even if you're not a member of an association, you'll fall under the bylaws or the guidelines of a conference. So our high school is a member of the IHSA. Currently, right now, our middle school is not a member of IESA. Most of our sports play in what is called the Mid-Northern Conference. The Mid-Northern Conference has bylaws and they work under the IESA umbrella, so similar to what the IHSA is, which does not allow for private participation. And then the last thing is, is our football team right now is currently not in a conference. But searching for a conference, so technically, they're not in a conference and they're not under IESA either. So they're a one lone ranger. They're searching for a conference right now. I think with the policy committee last night, it was one of them that felt was consistency. So anything else? That was the reasoning behind it, just when you start to work with the associations and the conferences, the stringent laws.
Why didn't this go to vote? Why wasn't this brought to us as an issue to vote upon? It went to committee. Doesn't the committee make a recommendation?
We just did. We recommended that we're keeping it the same. So if you want to move it, votes are held. It's your choice.
Should that be our role though? Isn't that just usual in Dr. Mary?
That's usually what the committee does, is the committee will review the policies and then bring forward what their recommendations are.
But they're not, at least for a vote tonight?
Consent.
But it's not a consent.
It's not a consent.
Who decided it would not go to vote?
The committee last night decided that they would keep it the way it is.
Which is Mary's call?
It was the committee's. The committee was in agreement. It wasn't my call.
But that it shouldn't go to vote tonight?
Committee was in agreement with keeping the policy the way it is.
But in doing so, you realize like the board has no say now in this issue.
You can make a motion and change it.
Well, I can't make a motion. It's my sister. But I'm dismayed that the committee didn't make a recommendation that allowed people to vote. I actually had planned on abstaining because it is my sister. But that doesn't seem proper protocol. Tom had talked last week about, at our last meeting about following some procedures that were usual and customary with how we dealt with six colon 310. And it seems to me this should have gone to vote. I don't know how we would have voted on it. We won't get a chance to vote on it, but it seems to me we should have.
And I'm not disagreeing with your thought or arguing with you. What I did was follow our customary protocol for how we do the policy.
Which is, may be another reason for all of us to revisit. I brought up a couple of meetings ago, we should revisit our policy committee makeup because this is a real, that's a really powerful call, quite frankly, Mary, but I think does fall on your shoulders. Mary is the...
You want to vote? I'll make a motion that we vote on it right now.
Joe, I do believe though, when Tom spoke at the last meeting, his theory was that we should take the recommendation of the committee. Otherwise, why do we have the committees?
But we, and I would agree, but it should have gone. I just feel like it should have gone to vote. And when in doing, again, I find myself in the position like I am with six colon 310, having a son that's in that program. I find myself in a situation with my sister and I've chatted quite a bit with her and talking with people about where did seven colon four come from. And the press's recommendation in 2015 was, "A non-public school student is eligible to participate in, one, interscholastic competition provided his or her participation adheres to the regulations established by the association in which the school district maintains a membership." And then it goes on to do non-athletic. So I started wondering, where did this come from? When did we first decide that we weren't going to allow this to happen?
So then if you take that farther, now you go into the association stuff. And then when you walk into the association, there's a clause that says, "To be eligible, they have to be enrolled and take a minimum of 25 credit hours for work for which the district will grant these credits on the students." That's IHSA.
We are talking IHSA.
I'm going to IESA. IESA also talks about where the student attends, where is the student's attendance, where is their permanent records housed. That's how they go about determining. Mary, you asked for the IESA and I'm working on the bylaws. I'm still waiting for that. I will send you guys copies of that too. So, but IESA doesn't speak as much about the credit hours as IHSA does. IESA talks about where does the student attend, where are the student's permanent records housed. That is for their view of where a student attends. That is what they look at.
This is clearly too late to make any recommendation that will matter to my sister, so I do feel more open to speak to it. But again, we have a situation where press makes a recommendation and I wish we would have all been brought up to speed on its recommendation and had an opportunity to vote on it. That seems only appropriate that we would have had a chance to vote on it. And much like six colon 310, where I think at least a few people were convinced by all the reasons we shouldn't do something, I'd kind of like us to quit focusing on the reasons we shouldn't do something and why things could go wrong and these potential parents who might be dismayed, and we look at what good might come out of it. Because we have, sitting before us, one person who could have benefited from this. And I know that part of the discussion was potential parents who wouldn't be happy with changing this policy, but those are only a possibility. It seemed with six colon 310, there was a lot of focus on the reasons why not to do something. I just, we wish we would have had more robust conversations. I sound like Ed now. More robust conversations about why we should do it. And when I looked at the meeting minutes last night, it seemed like it was mostly reasons we shouldn't do it. And I would have liked to have seen that we had, the committee had an opportunity and we had an opportunity to discuss why we should do it and weigh all of those and vote on that. And it's too late to do that, but, and I'm going, if you bring it to vote, I'm going to abstain anyway. And I'm not sure there's been enough conversation for us to vote well on it. And we have, we hear that there are legal reasons we shouldn't and policies and associations and conferences that state we can't do it, but I haven't seen those. And my sister's saying she's not sure those exist and she's talking with coaches. And again, I'm in a weird position where I hear what she's researched and I hear what's being presented to us. And I feel in a very strange position where I'm not sure I have everything I need to have made the best decision. So, there. I spoke my mind.
All right. So we'll move on to business services committee, which neither of them are here.
Hasn't.
They haven't met. They don't have one set. Facilities, long-range planning?
We haven't met. We won't meet until the course starts.
Okay. I'm intrigued.
We have not met and there are no plans to meet at this point.
Move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Mr. Heselhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Snacy?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
And item four, unfinished business. A second reading and approval of policy six colon 310.
I'm not even going to talk about it. I just let you guys know enough about it. Yep. I think we had it on our agenda, so it's what I talked about.
You know.
Any questions, comments, discussions?
Big, uh, this letter, I think, mentions me in particular, that I have a vested interest in higher education enrollment. Oh, I guess being a college professor, I do.
All right. So do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to table six, three, 10, one more time until we have a complete board.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
All right. We'll see you next month.
You'll be on the September agenda, Kelly, so you could just cut this again.
Okay. Thank you. All right. New business, July 2017 bills.
I make a motion to approve the July 17, 2017 bills.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Heselhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Snacy?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Item B, resolution to regulate expense reimbursements.
This is something that is required by state. I explained it last night, the policy. They are requiring us by law to put a cap on the amount of money that can be reimbursed to a board member. I've done some asking around with other school districts and some talking and everybody says they're just setting it high so that board members can be reimbursed when they go to something for professional development. Seems like everybody was picking the dollar amounts of about $3,000 or $4,000. And so by resolution, we have to adopt this resolution. I chose $4,000, nothing more than a random pull-down out of the sky to make sure that you guys could be reimbursed. And I brought it up last night. My recommendation would be to cap our reimbursement at $4,000. And I think, Mary, you'll have to read the resolution.
I was just going to say, do I need to read?
Yeah.
All right. Whereas section 1020 of the school code 105, ILCS 5/10-20, grant school boards other powers that are not inconsistent with their duties. Whereas section 10 of the local government travel expense control acts 50, ILCS 150, added by PA 99-604, effective 1-1 of 17, provides that the school board shall by resolution regulate the reimbursement of all travel, meal, and lodging expenses of officers and employees, including but not limited to, one, the types of official business for which travel, meal, and lodging expenses are allowed; two, maximum allowable reimbursement for travel, meal, and lodging expenses; and three, a standardized form for which submission of travel, meal, and lodging expenses supported with minimum documentation. Whereas the board regulates the type of expenses that are allowed in board policies 2:125, board member compensation expense, and 5:60 expenses. Whereas, based upon the school district's budget and other financial considerations, the superintendent has recommended to the board a maximum allowable reimbursement amount of $4,000 for board members and district staff. Whereas, the board requires submission of appropriate standardized expense forms supported with required written minimum documentation. 50 ILCS 150/10 and 20, whereas submitted expenses that exceed the board's maximum allowable reimbursement amount may be approved by roll call vote at an open meeting of the board when an emergency or other extraordinary circumstances exist. 50 ILCS 150/10 and 15, whereas all board members' expenses must be approved by roll call vote at an open meeting of the board. 50 Illinois CS 150/15. Done.
Some...
Good job, Mary.
A second.
Of course. Roll call.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mrs. Snacy?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Mr. Heselhorst?
Yes.
All right. Item C, bus purchases.
Yeah. This continues our rotation of what we do nearly of our fleet of buses. We're recommending trading out three buses, which are Bluebirds, and replacing them with three newer ones. Total cost would be $198,444. Did talk with Mr. Mahoney today and he wanted me to bring up a couple of questions slash concerns that he had. And one of his questions or concerns are is that we are only bidding out international and should we be more, maybe we should be more competitive with other dealers such as Bluebird and working those avenues too with our bidding process. And then the other thing he wanted to know, and I'll have Julia speak to both of these, consider leasing buses. Some of these buses have more state-of-the-art technology than what we're currently buying with better emissions. Would we be at a wiser point to lease buses moving forward? And so Julia and I have had these conversations a couple of times. I did tell Ed I would bring that forward for him tonight with, to at least make it note that those were his concerns and to be part of the conversation for at least Julia to address to the boards. But my recommendation is, is to approve these three buses for a total of $198,444. So Julia, do you want to speak to it just a little bit?
Yeah. The reason that we go to the international buses is that they're the ones that have the front ends on them and the Bluebirds are the flat nose one. And talking with the mechanic who works on those buses says that a lot of the, when something happens to the bus and you have to work on it, he can't get to the engine, parts of the engine without a hoist and we don't have that. But with the Bluebirds, he's able to go over top, go underneath.
The International?
I mean, I'm sorry, with Internationals, he's be able, he's able to do more work in-house without having to farm them out. So...
International's more of the nose with a hood like a bar.
The big nose on the front.
Bluebird's got the flat nose.
And talking with the drivers as well, a lot of the drivers are not comfortable driving the Bluebirds because the Bluebirds, the wheels are underneath you where the Internationals are more like the cars where they're out in front of you. So that has been the reason why we do go towards the International because it's money-saving if we can do most of the work in the house. And as far as the lease-to-purchase option that has been on this quote, there, the cost of the lease is $75,135, so it's about $400 less than the purchase price, but there's also a 3.25% interest rate, which comes out to about $3,000 per bus of the three buses. So it costs us about $9,000 more to do a lease purchase rather than to do outright purchase. And our money right now, we're only getting less than 1% on our money, so I feel that it's best to pay it upfront since we're not getting only 1% on their money instead of turn around and paying this gentleman 3.25 interest rate on that. Since basically, we're, he's loaning us money to that. So in all my dealings, it's, to me, it's best to buy out if the interest rate that we're paying is more than what we're getting at the bank. Those are the two reasons.
If the board's direction is for us, I mean, that's been the reason why we've moved this way, but if the board would like us to pursue some of these other avenues such as leasing or Bluebirds and all that, I would ask...
I'd like to see a, you know, price comparison between the Bluebird and International and what we're saving or what we're giving up.
Well, my question is, what would a hoist cost? Like, I don't know. Could we get one? Like, that's the one thing, if it's $100.
About 30 grand.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not saying I'm totally fine with the Internationals, but that would have to be part of the conversation if we're going to do this.
And what kind of scope of work do they do here? Just maintenance and farm out any larger repairs they do?
No. We do, we do the brakes, we do change oil pans.
He'll try to do repairs and stuff too.
We do...
If it starts to get to massive major repairs, then we do have to farm some of that out.
Right. Anything that has to go up on a hoist, that he does or that takes too much time.
So we try to keep that in-house as much as we can.
Yeah. I mean, I imagine we're saving a lot of money by not farming out some.
Right. You can see by the revenue versus the expenses in the budget that we are saving money by doing this stuff in-house.
Did we get any other bids as far as the trade-ins?
What we run into is, is you have Bluebird dealers, you have international dealers, and so it seems like you're either dealing with one...
He calls, we call every, every bus dealer in the area, regardless if they're Bluebirds or not. They may, a Bluebird dealer could have an International on a trade-in for some reason. So we contact everyone within a driving range. I think the farthest we're going is three, three, four hours away. We draw, we call everybody and ask them what they have in stock at the time we put this together.
I think if we're going to limit our bid to this one bus, we need to reach out a little farther than two or three hours away because they will deliver them on the sale. We've quoted Internationals and we've only contacted two international dealers here. The other two are Bluebird dealers, so we're not going to get anything from them. This is a big purchase and we're also, we're also seven years behind emissions when we buy these buses because they meet 2010 emissions. And that means that a resale on these buses is going to be terrible.
Well, the only problem, if you go out further then, then you're getting out of state and they are not programmed for Illinois as far as whatever laws they have to be because they were, they're for whatever state they're at. Then you're going to pay more money for them to get equipped according to the state law.
Well, if we live in a pretty big state, I find it hard to believe that we can only contact two international bus dealers. And I would be surprised that the bordering states have that much difference in their regulations of a school bus.
We can check into that. I have talked to Scott about that and he said that he has found that when you go outside out of the state, that they're not, you're going to pay more money to get them equipped for the state of Illinois.
What I would say moving forward, let's try that and bring those quotes back to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of three used 2016 international buses and trade-in three Bluebirds.
Motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I'm going to be discussion.
Okay.
It's too late to change any plans as of now, right? This will put us out. We would be missed, if we changed any plans and didn't vote to move forward on this, we would be out buses for when school starts because our next...
We would not have the, I would not be able to guarantee you that. We have these, these three buses that he had. He had to actually, he didn't have the three that we wanted. They were sold. He could only round up two. So he gave us the one with 16,000 miles for the same price as the other two because he had promised that he could get us three if we could at the 24,000 mile range, but since he couldn't get them, that he, he got the bus for 16,000. So if we don't get that one, then we won't get probably any of those. We'd have to wait till leases were done and they were brought back.
But if you're asking about our fleet, we've still got the same fleet as what we have.
And those buses that we're trading in are still functional? They're just due for the rotation?
One does not run.
Okay.
And we have been taking the seat cushions out to repair other buses with them because it hasn't been running.
Okay.
So there's just one that's not running. We do have other ones, but that one does not run.
Okay.
Tom, I'm interested in your take on this a little bit more detail. I know Ed had his concerns with it, that we weren't seeing enough bidding going out.
I'd definitely like to see more, more of his.
And I don't want to sound like the bad apple here, but Scott's not the transportation director. So if we vote on this, next thing you know, we're going to have teachers presenting us things past administration. Scott's a mechanic. I believe Julia's classified as a transportation director. That's who should have handled the bidding. I really don't think that, I'm having a tough time believing that there's only two international dealers.
Julia, have this gone through you? Is this, have your blessing?
We talk about it and he gets the bids and brings them back and we talk about him. And I have talked with, with the Scott. We've email, I've emailed with Scott.
Scott stepped with Julia all the way through it. And I think one of the things Scott's talking to him about is, is the in-depth equipment on the buses and stuff.
Right.
He knows it so much, so well. And so Julia really works with his feedback to bring this through.
Here again, I feel like we're kind of, or at least I'm not being familiar with this at all. Kind of a hardened, here's some compelling arguments why not to, but if this is what the administration has brought to us and you feel it's the best, then I will approve it. But here's some pretty glaring reasons why not to. And I don't know what kind of position it will put us in if we don't approve this tonight.
We can only, I mean, I have no objection to going further and going outstate and bringing back to you. I have no objections to that.
But if you do that, we're probably going to lose these... But if you do that, we're probably going to lose these three buses, another district will.
We will.
We'd have to go through the process of.
Yeah, we would probably lose these. And with one of our buses not running, that, you know, I don't know about taking it further away.
That'll have to be figured into it.
Right.
I know some of the Bluebirds, I see Bus 31 goes through my neighborhood, and it's looking a little worse for wear.
Right.
That was the same bus that my daughter got on on the first day of fifth grade, and she's going to be 23.
That's the one, Butch drives?
Mm-hmm.
That's the only one we are keeping. That's the only one that runs well enough to keep.
And it's looking, it's looking a little.
Sad, yes. But it's the best Bluebird, that's the best out of the four that we have left.
I didn't realize you could have a non-running, uninspected bus in your bus yard. I think that is state law.
It's not, I don't know if it's brought back.
We moved it when we regraded the parking lot, it's sitting by the middle school.
Mm-hmm. So I don't believe it's on the lot.
So they're only giving us $4,700 for the running buses, and then $900 less for the bus that doesn't run? Am I seeing that right, on the trade-ins?
Yes.
Are the buses in that bad a shape? Just, are they that rough?
They're rusty now, yes. They, that one would not make inspection, no, that one.
Yeah, 31 is the best out of the Bluebird buses, it's, that one's getting rusty, I'm looking a little, little sorry and sad. I think Butch loves that bus, though.
He does, and that's why we are holding that one. One of the reasons, other than it's running.
So we have a motion, I don't know if we have a second.
Yeah, a second.
Okay. Motion a second. Any further discussion?
I think I'd really like to see other bids, just a comparable, something to compare against.
I think at a minimum, we should have been presented with three international dealers, even if two of them denied us, at least we would have done our part and contacted three international dealers for what's almost a $200,000 purchase.
Roll call.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
No.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
No.
Mr. Beverly?
I'm going to vote yes, because our administration has presented this, but again, just like what we discussed a little bit earlier in the meeting, I'm really, I'm really, feel like I'm caught between a rock and a hard place. I feel like you've presented this, and I trust you, Julia, but I also hear their concerns, and I think they're very valid, and I can't help but feel like there's a way to work these things out, where I don't feel like, oh, you know, I trust their opinion, but I feel like as a board member, if you've presented it and you feel you've done due diligence, I'm going to vote yes on this.
I think moving forward, we can go.
Yeah, I hope we will, because I feel bad about voting yes, but.
And I agree, I will the next time present.
Item D, the tentative budget.
Yeah, for policy, provided you with a copy of our initial budget projections for next year. Please, please, please keep in mind, this is very initial, and we'll change it again in August, as well as in September. As I just stated earlier, we really don't know for sure what we're going to get from the state, and as time grows here, and we see more of this develop down there, we can get a little more accurate. But as of right now, we've plugged in the revenue similar to what our revenue we received from this year from the state, and I think that that's a safe estimate. Like I said, where that ends up will still be determined. We have plugged in the increases and the expenditures that we've known to this point, so you see it there. One of the things that I would say, looking at, especially at our top funds up there, under the estimated surplus, we're estimating a surplus of $153,918, and like I said, we did plug in our known expenses and estimates for the upcoming school. Julia, anything you'd like to add? We probably would have to transfer some money, depending how the year shakes out, from one fund to another.
Right. If, I haven't done the transportation report, so at this point, revenue is a guest at this time, but if it ends up with a large surplus, I would suggest to the board to, at the end of the fiscal year next year, to make a resolution to transfer some of that to the O&M fund, because we are putting in $500,000 of our state aid into the O&M fund to keep that, and it still is a $41,000 in the hole, or deficit for next year. So I would, we have done that in the previous years, so I would recommend that again.
Do you have any action on this?
No, just informational tonight. Just informational, so if there's any questions.
Any further? And if not, we're looking for a motion for executive session for the appointment and employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of a public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee for the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Ellison?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
You need to answer?
Yes.
You need to answer?
Yes.
Do I?
Yes.
All right, executive session.